Good evening, members of the public. Ms. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education. The Monroe Township Board of Education Organization meeting is now called to order. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted December 23rd, 2021 at all schools, The Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality. This is a unique Board of Education meeting where it begins without a board president. As chair and as board secretary, it is my role to chair the meeting until such time as the successful nomination process for president is complete. At this time, would you please join me for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Moving along on the agenda, we are now at number four, election results. The election results have been sent to all the Board of Education members and copies are available in the front of the media center for the public. The election results have been confirmed and certified by the County Clerk of Elections. It is now my duty to administer the oath of office to the following individuals who are hereby requested to join me at the table up front. Ms. Gazala Bora, Ms. Katie Fabiano, Ms. Kate Ratner, and Mr. Paul Rutzke. Please repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Katie Fabiano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state
And this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I
I.
State your name.
Katie Fabiano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully
And I will faithfully
impartially
And justly
And justly perform all duties of that office
Perform all duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I
I, Katie Fabiano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
And declare
And declare.
That I am not disqualified as a voter
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified to hold this office
And that I am not disqualified to hold this office.
Due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
So help me God. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Please sign.
Very cool. That's very cool.
Welcome to have a seat at the board table. Please place your name plates and have a seat wherever you want. Welcome to have a seat at the board table. Please place your name plates and have a seat wherever you want. Ms. Arminio.
Here.
Ms. Belko.
Here.
Ms. Beerman.
Here.
Ms. Bora.
Here.
Mr. Chirella.
Here.
Ms. Fabiano.
Here.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Here.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke.
Here.
And Ms. Skirby.
Here.
We have a quorum present at this meeting this evening. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted December 23rd, 2021 at all schools, on the district website at HTTPS backslash backslash WWW.MONRO.K12.NJ.us, The Home News Tribune, The Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality. Okay. We will now move to number seven on the agenda, election of a board president. Excuse me. I will open the nomination process at this time. Is there any member who wishes to make a nomination
I do.
For president?
I would like to nominate Chrissy Skirby for board president.
Does not require a second? Does anybody else wish to nominate a member for board president?
Michael.
Mr. Rutzke.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Arminio.
Actually, if I may, thank you very much.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes, please. And I enjoyed my list, but for reasons I cannot perform any duties this year. So I'm sorry, I cannot.
Thank you for the nomination.
Mr. Rutzke, do you wish to withdraw your nomination based on
Respectfully, I will withdraw my nomination.
Thank you. Is there any other members who wish to nominate anyone for board president?
Mr. Garcia, I'd like to nominate Mr. Ken Chirella.
And I would like, and I wish to, but I can't accept that.
Mr. Chirella.
I can't accept the nomination, but I am appreciative. Thank you.
Mr. Chirella, you decline?
I decline.
Okay. Ms. Ratner, do you wish to withdraw your nomination? Anyone else wishing to make a nomination for board president? Okay, seeing none, I will close the nomination process for president. We only have one, but it still requires a roll call.
Doesn't Roberts Rule, excuse me, I'm sorry. Point of order, doesn't Roberts
Ms. Belko.
Doesn't Roberts Rules of Order call that if there's only one nominee on the floor that the secretary could cast the vote and we don't need to take a roll call?
We've always had a roll call for this. It'll take just a minute. If it doesn't mind, it'll make it official and we'll have it in the minutes officially who voted and who didn't and who abstained.
But we only have one nominee on the floor and Roberts Rules of Order states that you only need the secretary to cast the yea vote for the position to be taken, the seat to be taken.
Ms. Belko, I could have all no votes, so I think it's still prudent to have a vote. So at this time, we will have a
I do have.
A vote. A yes is to not, to vote for Ms. Skirby to be board president.
Ms. Point of order also, maybe wait until we have a ruling.
Certainly, there's nothing wrong with having a roll call on this vote. There's nothing improper about it. Even with one member only elected, we've always had a roll call in the past. And without counsel, you're
Page 79, Section B of the Rules of Order in Brief, Chapter 9, Nominations, Section B, Elections. Elections are commonly conducted by ballot under the procedure prescribed in the previous chapter. If only one candidate has been nominated for an office, the chair simply declares the nominee elected, which is referred to as an election by acclamation unless the organization's bylaws require a ballot vote. Mrs. Skirby is last year's chairman of the Policy Committee. Do you have any idea whether there's a conflict in our policy and procedure?
I do not.
Thank you, Ms. Belko, but as chair of the meeting, I still wish to proceed with a roll call.
I object.
Very well. Ms. Arminio, how do you vote for Ms. Skirby for president?
Under the circumstances, I'll abstain.
Ms. Belko.
Abstain.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Mr. Chirella.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke.
No.
Ms. Skirby, you are entitled to vote for yourself.
Yes.
The yeas have it. Ms. Skirby, congratulations. Ms. Skirby, would you mind taking this president's seat? Now, Ms. Skirby, if you wouldn't mind just repeating the same process for nomination, opening the nomination process for a vice president and then, once we have all them, you could close it and we'll
Yes. Okay. We will now go to number eight on the agenda, election of the board vice president. Are there, we will open the floor for nominations. Are there any nominations for a board vice president?
Yes. I'd like to nominate Karen Beerman.
Okay. And that does not require a second, correct?
Correct.
Are there any other nominations on the floor for vice president? Seeing none, we will close the nominations for vice president and I guess we go to a roll call?
Yes.
Point of order? I'd like to make the exact same point of order. We only have
Okay, yes, you are correct.
One person on the agenda who's no one else has stepped up.
You're correct.
I'd like to say that we only need one vote to be cast by the chair.
Okay. And that would be yes. So we will have Karen Beerman is our vice president. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Congratulations.
Madam President.
Yes, Michelle.
Congratulations to both our nominees and welcome to our new board members. I would like to maybe say, maybe we should really establish how closely we will follow Roberts Rules. And I've said over the last eight years that just because we've done something in the past doesn't mean we've done it correctly and not necessarily by intention of doing it incorrectly, but we should always try to be the best governing body that we can. So I'd like to, you know, maybe next meeting, talk about our adherence to Roberts Rules as best we can.
Absolutely. Thank you, Michelle. Okay. Our next item is number nine, the Code of Ethics. I believe we're all supposed to get a copy of that from you, Mr. Gorski?
Yes, ma'am. I believe it was distributed and if you don't mind, I'd like to recommend a motion in regard to the Code of Ethics. It is recommended that the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education acknowledge receipt of and acceptance of the New Jersey School Board's Association Code of Ethics. This does require a roll call also. Is there a first and second? Mr. Chirella?
I'll second it.
Mr. Rutzke? Thank you. We'll have a roll call. Ms. Skirby.
Yes.
Ms. Bora.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Ratner.
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano.
Yes.
Mr. Chirella.
Yes.
Ms. Belko.
Yes.
Ms. Beerman.
Yes.
Ms. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke.
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky.
Yes.
Madam President, motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess we sign, we hand that all to you at the end, sign?
Yes, please. If you would just announce to the members just to drop it off with me before we close the meeting.
Okay. If everyone will just hand that into Mr. Gorski at the close of the meeting. Thank you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is our public forum. It's four minutes on any topic. Anybody wishing to come speak at the microphone, please state your name and address and adhere to our four minutes.
Well, first I want to thank Ms. Arminio for being board president for all these years. I think she's always carried herself with nothing but class while doing so and she we missed as far as moving forward. Congratulations to Chrissy Skirby and Karen Beerman and our, of course, our new people that just got appointed today. I think our school district is going to go in the right direction from this point on. I really do. I feel we have some very intelligent people that come onto the board. I feel we had, we had some, we had and have some intelligent people as well still here. And I do believe, I'm very excited for what this new board and the old existing board has in store for the residents of Monroe and our children. Thank you very much.
Madam President, it's a unique, a unique night because I stand before my wife sitting here, so I guess I better behave. You know, I watched over the last, I don't know, 10 months, these three women, you know, pour their hearts out, put everything in to run for this board. And, you know, I must say, I'm proud, proud of seeing how they collaborated together. You know, really thankful that I got to meet Gazala and Kate, you know, a lot closer to really understand what they stand for. You know, this is a great opportunity. I'm very proud of my wife, a teacher for a long time who gets it, who doesn't have a bad bone in her body, but is drug through the sand, you know, by a select few in this town because that's how they think they can win. But the results overwhelmingly show that you can't steal a race. You can't throw people through the mud and win. So they can sit at home now and watch this glorious night. And I'm, you know, really proud to see my wife and the whole team here, but also to look at a board that is mostly parents, people who have a vested interest in this school, not people who do this as a hobby, not people who are here as retirees, which is fine, but people who really do care about the kids, care about our own kids and want to see things forward. So congratulations and congratulations to Ms. Beerman being elected to vice president and Mrs. Skirby.
Thank you.
Now, I'll end with my last two minutes, 2:20. Can someone comment on the chain of events that happened over the weekend in terms of why the schools decided to go remote? Pause my time, please.
Good evening, everyone. And let me first start off by saying congratulations to our three new board members. I know them as parents and I'm very excited to be able to wish them well on this board and congratulations to Mrs. Beerman and Mrs. Skirby for their new appointed positions. That being said, we were in constant contact, that is myself and Dr. Lehman throughout the invitation. As we had stated when we sent out our Blackboard Connect, we had every intention of returning to school, half day or early dismissal, instruction in person. It was my understanding that we had confirmed, after speaking with Dr. Lehman quite a few times, we had confirmed that we were properly staffed as far as teachers and paras and so forth in the buildings. We confirmed by building, utilizing our Aesop system, as well as by having a conversation. There were two elementary principals that did reach out, that it was getting very close, but they felt that they could make it work because we thought the imperativeness of returning, because based upon the information that we had, COVID was not, COVID is always an issue. Let me say this correctly. COVID would not be stopping us from opening the buildings. It's always an issue whenever anyone is ill. That being said, I received a phone call sometime after 5:00. It was a voicemail. I was actually in my home like a real person. I called back Mr. Gorski at that time. He had great concerns that we should reach out to Ms. McDonald. At that time, I hung up with him. It was definitely after 5:30 or after 6:00 PM, probably close to 6:30. I immediately called Dr. Lehman. Dr. Lehman provided me, which I thought I had on my phone, I did not, Ms. McDonald's number. I dialed Ms. McDonald, then I included Dr. Lehman and then Mr. Gorski into the phone call. At that time, I was informed due to late minute bus drivers as well as paras, or I should say transportation aides, which is the right terminology, we would not be able to complete the runs. Much to my dismay, still to my dismay, because we had every intention and I am very hopeful in saying that after a conversation, I will be confirming that conversation tomorrow, both verbally and in writing, that we will be ready to go separate from any COVID issues, which of course we need to look at the numbers again, separate from the Department of Health and nurses and leadership team, based upon transportation, we will be ready to go full time in person on Monday. That's the exact chain of events that occurred. So I don't know if Mr. Gorski wants to add anything to it regarding when Ms. McDonald reached out to him. Of course, he's more than welcome to.
Thank you, Ms. Chanley. The only thing I would add was, you know, Transportation Department was 100% committed to an open also. We're all part of the administrative team. We all plan to open for half days this week, but we had a series of late callouts Sunday evening, all of which were because of COVID or a family member of the transportation staff member having COVID. Most concerning was we had five para, as you said, assistant callouts. And even though we were covering that with properly trained transportation clerical staff to be aides on the buses, it had gotten to the point where we had no one else that was trained that could fill in. The callouts for sick continued after our conversation and, you know, that was the unfortunate circumstance that we could not, in my opinion, effectively operate the transportation service because of the short staffed issue. And most concerning was the requirements to have an aide on the bus, which we could not fulfill. We would not want to leave a special education child requiring an aide without one. So that's why I made that urging call to you.
Thank you.
I had two minutes and 10 seconds, but, so maybe you just give me 20 seconds to count in your head. Madam President, may I ask the question to the business administrator?
Yes.
So the question would be, no matter who sat in that superintendent's seat, based on the information you got, based on the late callouts you got, didn't matter if the pope sat in that seat, the same result would have needed to come because the buses wouldn't have been able to operate, correct?
Madam?
Yes.
The answer is 100% yes.
So do you blame Mrs. Chanley for having to cancel the schools?
Do I?
Madam President, can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Do you blame Mrs. Chanley for having to cancel the schools?
I don't blame Ms. Chanley or blame anyone.
Great. So what I would say is, we have to come together as a town and I'm sure this board is not gonna, is not gonna solve it here. But to see in this community, which many of us share, the level of disdain divisiveness last night, of course, set off by, you know, the handful of, you know, hot folks that need hobbies, it is disgusting, absolutely disgusting to see nearly a two-decade-long administrator in our town who has been open and honest, more than transparent, take the brunt of this. I'd like to see through, and maybe I guess we can Oprah, the time the phone calls came in, who they were, how many buses were. We'll get all that information. But to see what this woman, who took over a mess, has had to gone through, we have a way bigger problem than education at this point. We have a behavioral problem, but people need to wake up and work together and figure this out. And I just want to say, you know, I don't know Mrs. Chanley a long time, but I know what she's done in the district and I don't want you to lose faith in what we are as a district. We're not Princeton. We're not Woodbridge. We're not Obridge. We're not East Brunswick. We're not South River. We are Monroe. And this is what matters and I don't want you to give up on us. Keep pushing forward because we know, and I trust what I've seen thus far, that you can help us, you know, right the ship here. Thank you. Congrats.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, 2 Barrymore Drive. To the three new members, welcome and congratulations. To the other members of the Board of Education, thank you for your continued support. I actually had the same question as Mr. Fabiano. What was the chain of events? Because I know it was every intention to open the district. And I just wanted to say to Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman, thank you for your service. It is an incredibly challenging time to be in education. No matter what you choose, you're not going to make everybody happy, but thank you for having the best interests of our students and our staff in mind. We do appreciate you. You have a lot of support. We have to give everybody a chance and the divisiveness, I said it last month, I'm going to say it this month, and I'm going to keep saying it until we get this fixed. If we do not all work together as a team, we are not going to move this district forward. We really need to stop internally, externally, we're trying to divide and we really need to focus on the students, focus on the staff, and move our district forward so that we can improve education, which is what supposedly we're all here for. So anybody that's trying to undermine this team of Dr. Lehman and Mrs. Chanley at this point, you really need to stop because it's not really helping anything and I would ask everybody to just think for a minute. I advocate a lot for special education. That's what I do. What are you bringing to the table? What are you advocating for? Because sitting behind a keyboard bashing people is not okay and it's not helping our educational system in any way, shape, or form. So to the two of you, thank you again. Continue to do what you're doing. You have a lot of support.
Radip Malam, 4 Jake Place. Congratulations for the new members and thanks for your service for all the existing members. And today, I, my hope for solving this township or this board's issues was multi-folded in last year and now this year it was doubled more. And I know like we have same old problems to solve, but this team, I can call them, this is like my dream team for the World Series. So let's go and get it done. That's one of my points. And I want to reiterate like two major qualities I'm expecting from each one of you. One is empathy. Whether you are in committee, whether you are listening to the public, whether you are in, listening to your colleagues or listening to the administration or within yourselves, just listen, just don't hear. Listen, try to understand and why we are making these comments or demands or anything and then just try to listen it. Then being presence of mind is solving 50% of the problem. The remaining 50% of the problem is action. You will be defined by your actions, not by your supporters' words, not by the mudslinger's words or anybody who is defining you on the Facebook. You will be defined by your own actions or lack of your actions. So I expect like some action from each and every one of you. And we are in the middle of the COVID and I greatly thankful to Ms. Chanley and Dr. Lehman for your proactive planning and proactive actions taken, not just waiting for some DOH or CDC or like county or somebody's directions. We need to work under their guidance, but we need to plan for every possibility that is going to outcome and we are very thankful for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak a public forum? Hi. Please come and state your name and address.
Sure. My name is Lori Miller and I really don't like to give my address. My husband wouldn't be happy with that. I just had a question.
You have to state your address.
Oh, 123 Main Street.
It says you really only need to state your town. It does not say address, just so you know.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay. I was just wondering if the I was just wondering if the district has, like, a COVID committee, with any doctors or scientists on the committee? Like, who are we consulting with? Like, are we consulting with any pediatricians? Like, I just, I guess maybe, and I'm late to the meeting, so I apologize, but I just don't understand, like, who makes the decisions regarding COVID? Do we have any doctors on staff, or?
Mrs. Chanley?
Didn't you speak on that, and then you all the others?
So what we do is, we have a lead nurse. She congregates and collaborates and gets all the data that's reported by the parents, communicates that to us. We have a spreadsheet that kind of logs everything. And then she's in contact with epidemiologists in the county. And she sends our data, they actually compare it, and they have access to the township data. And they'll take a look and see, what is our township data look like? What is our school data look like? There's clearly data that they get that we don't have. And all those kind of factors weigh into what we look at. And that's basically the grounds for our decision-making we have. We follow all of our guidance that we're required to file, in terms of what's required by the DOH, the CDC, in terms of spacing, masking, hand sanitizers. We're anticipating some updated school guidance on quarantining. We currently are following the existing seven, test after five days, come back after the seventh-day guidance. I know the CDC changed the general population data, or guidance to, you can return after five days. That does not apply to schools. CDC is updating school guidance, then NJDOH will look at it and relate to us. But that's really at the heart of our, heart of our decision-making processes, looking at our live data.
Okay. So when you say "we," do you mean, like, the administrators, or the Board of Ed? I don't, I guess I don't understand, like, who makes the daily decisions about COVID policy?
So it would be the administrative team, the nurses, the building administrators.
Nurses don't really have, you know, administrative experience.
No, but they have the boots on the ground, you know, who's calling, who are the close contacts that maybe aren't reported on our data sheets and things like that, so they can get a feel for, like, what the real attendance looks like, and things like that. We get the reported data, we get the case data with our, with our state numbers, and state case numbers and things.
Right.
But we also know that if there's a close contact of a parent who's been out of school for 10 days, the nurses have that logged. They may not be a positive case yet, but we know that that may impact us in terms of how many kids are in a classroom at a time, and things like that.
I'm just curious, just because by last week, to me, it was pretty obvious that the state's positivity rate was way too high to go back to school. So I was just curious why it took so long to make that decision. You know, like, it was pretty obvious that, you know, when you have a positivity rate upwards of 12%, 13%, and now we're at 33%, you can't go back to school. So I just didn't know, like, what the process is of making those decisions. Could we have, like, parents that are doctors and scientists on some sort of committee to help out with those sort of issues? I mean, I guess to me, it seemed like it was obvious that there was no way to go back to school.
You can speak on that, yeah.
So, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Lehman. Actually, we can't look at the overall just state. It's district by district of whether or not we would go back to school. We were coming back to school, so we are currently not in school now because of transportation. Because the percentages that we look at, and I'm not in any way lessening the danger or the concerns, but when we look at it, and each district does do this, because there are many districts that are open, we look at trends. The reason why, the information that our lead nurse compiles and aggregates, disaggregates, and so forth, when she sends it to the Department of Health, they look for similarities, patterns, and trends. I won't ever speak about another district, but there are districts that have been closed by the suggestion of the Department of Health. But that's not the whole state. So although you were right, and we went to the red in the state, and the numbers went up and surged, that is not our district. Our district, based upon, and I hear what you're saying, overall, but when we look at our specific cases, our specific trends, we don't make that decision, because you're absolutely right, we are not the medical professionals. That information previously and continually gets shared through our lead nurse, that's part of her responsibilities, with the Department of Health, and they do the actual, the epidemiologists will actually look at the trends, close contacts, who they are and who they aren't. So although the overall of the state, we have to also remember that each LEA, or each specific school district, is making the choices, and someone made a comment, which I totally agree with, is making choice for their district. So when we are concerned with safety, and spreading, and numbers, we have to look only at Monroe. And then, of course, that information is shared. And the Department of Health, like I said, has closed down certain districts. We were not one of them that was going to be closed.
But how do we factor in the fact that a lot of people couldn't get tested, or didn't get tested, or weren't reporting, because they were actually on vacation? Like, do you think people who were on vacation were, like, they were getting COVID, and they were saying, "Oh, let me call the school"? No.
You'd be surprised.
Well, I think, I think, I think it's not, it's not a high percentage. I think people would just, like, avoid it, and just say, "Oh, well, if we say something, then we can't go back to school."
But I think that's, you know, respectfully, I think that when people share information, I think that's true any time of the year. We have to always rely upon, and we hope, and we are hopeful, that we rely upon the validity and the honesty of the individual person. Because we all know, that at any time, anybody who's, I mean, is a vaccinated individual, vaccinated individual is in a home with four COVID-positive people. They have no symptoms, they are vaccinated. By requirements, they are doing nothing wrong by reporting to no one, nor are they required to test. So that is, that is a factual scenario. So that being said, we have to function moving forward, keeping, of course, always thinking about the safety of children, but we have to also move forward. We know that because of the rules that we follow in school, we feel children are safe in school. Because we can close the schools, and then we don't, you know, we don't, we hope, like you do, that parents and caretakers are doing the right thing.
You're more hopeful, maybe, than I am. Maybe I'm more of a pessimist, I don't necessarily trust people.
Well, I mean, we gotta be, we gotta be, you know, this is the world we live in now, so we have to do our very best to look at the numbers, hope that people are reporting appropriately.
Okay. And I had another question about, because now the CDC is saying that maybe, like, cloth masks, they don't work as well, and obviously, kids are wearing cloth masks. I mean, is there any money left in the CARES Act to get kids, like, more appropriate masks? Because it's starting to get very expensive. And I know, like, my son gets his dirty, and then he throws it out, he wants a new one, he'll go through, like, four a day. And I'm like, you know, like, we're just running to the, like, do we have any money left to supply better-quality masks?
So we certainly, we have CARES funds, or we have, it's SARP funds now, that's what the new grant name is. We do have funds. We have masks in school, if the mask ever gets dirty, we have the surgical masks. We have other masks that are specific for students that have maybe different needs. Some masks are clear, so we can see mouth movements and things like that. So we do have masks. It's a conversation we can certainly have about masks, handing out different quality masks. You know, it's definitely something I would...
Because I, I mean, I don't know if you heard, but I did hear that maybe the cloth masks with Omnicrom are not that great, it's better to wear K95. I mean, I don't know, it's very confusing, obviously, for everyone.
And I would, so again, we're following the guidance.
Right.
If, we would be forced into doing that, if the guidance changes and says, you know, we would, one of the recommendations would be to have all students wear X kind of masks, then we have, then we cross a different bridge at that time. And we do have the funds.
Well, if we have the money, why wouldn't we just, I mean, can we not use it to buy masks?
And that's a conversation, too, we can have as a board, in terms of, you know, what do we want to supply, how many do you supply, do we give one, and then require that? That's a...
Well, I believe we do have, though, if a student does need a mask during the day, if theirs becomes dirty, or ripped, or something, they are provided a new mask.
Maybe, like, an email could go out, like, you know, telling the kids that, maybe they don't realize, you know, like... Because I said, sometimes my son will go through, like, four masks a day, he doesn't like it when the inside's dirty, or if he sneezes, and he throws it out. By the end of the week, I'm, like, running out every, you know, every day that CBS has to buy more masks.
Yeah, every bus has them on, has several things of masks. And so we definitely have them spread out, and we have masks. We actually have them at Central Office.
But I'm just saying, now, you're talking about upgrading, like, the upgrading of masks. There's a certain quality now with the more, you know...
So we certainly can look into.
Okay.
I think it's appropriate to look into.
Okay. And can I ask one more question? Or my 33 seconds? Oh, okay, sorry. Can, and could an email go out to parents explaining, like, the district's policy? Like, I think people are just confused on, like, testing, and when you should stay home, and if you haven't gotten your tests, like, I think another email needs to go out, because I don't think anybody really, like, reminders.
Welcome to the club, it changes constantly, so we even confuse ourselves sometimes. We do have, the nurses are crystal clear, but it does tweak. Like, it just changed December 15th. You can test after, between days five and seven, come back after day eight. If you don't, you can come after day 10. It's really can, really could be confusing if you're not living it every day. We do have somebody who can probably put a nice flowchart together.
Yes, we have Mr. Maralda, who is a supervisor of arts, careers, and technology, and he did offer, and he was sending it back and forth with us over New Year's, and right before New Year's, over the holiday. And we are very interested, because I think user-friendly information is very important to the community.
Right, and people maybe don't understand.
We were, to be honest with you, we were holding off slightly for a few days, because it may change again, literally, by Friday.
Oh, I'm sure.
So if that happens, what we planned on doing was, we wanted to make sure, because our concern is also, we're very respectful, we send out the information like a flowchart. By the time we send it out to you, within a day, it has to change, and people do get confused. So not to say that we're not gonna do it, if we don't hear that the guidance has changed by Friday, we will send it out as-is, with no problem.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Mr. Olefsky?
Good evening. Michael Olefsky, 50 Mayberry Avenue. Just had maybe one follow-up question. Can you tell us, as far as the COVID parameters? Are there actual, what, statistics, I guess, that you're looking at right now? And is it a qualitative judgment, based on all the data, that you yourselves, both the acting superintendent and vice superintendent make that judgment? Or, well, like I said, is it qualitative, or is it actually quantitative? Meaning, hey, there's some go, no-go numbers, and hey, if all five of those numbers come back negative, or red, then it's, all bets are off. Can you maybe talk a little to that? Because I think some of the people in the community are asking that kind of information as well. Thanks.
Okay, so I'm gonna start out, and then I do the number crunching, goes to Dr. Lehman. So I'll just do the explanation. So we, as Dr. Lehman has been providing, every Thursday, last week it was Friday, because we were on holiday, and we just waited, we went ahead and did the numbers based on what we have. What happens is, the nurse codes all of the information based upon staff and student, and how many people are positive, as far as who reports, and we understand that. After it's reported, we then take the numbers, and in addition to looking at percentage of population of the schools individually, percentage of the actual staff, we start looking at trends. That's where the quantitative data comes in. We don't do that. So for example, I want to say, we didn't get a response yet from the Department of Health this time, but we did get a response from the Department of Health last time. The information, and please correct me if I say anything that's an error, the information was sent out by Ms. Romolto, who was our head nurse. She sends out all the information, she provides the data, the way the Department of Health wants it, because they do it quantitatively. And then they come back to say, are there trends, and are there patterns which would cause a concern? And the answer was that there were none. And that was right, we did that right after Thanksgiving, because there was an uptick in the number, and we were aware of that. So I would have to say, and I don't know if you want, if you could say anything additionally, it is quantitative. The qualitative piece comes in, when the reality of us just being the leaders, look at numbers overall, to say, you know, for example, one particular building. Is there an issue? Is there a concern? Why is one building, let's say, have a higher number? Is that a concern? Is it the way their distance, comfort level, being with one another? But that has not been something that we have seen yet. I don't know if there's anything Dr. Lehman wants to add?
No, and I think that goes back to one of the questions about how the nurses come in play. Because they're hands-on with the data, and they know who's, who the person is the close contact to directly, we can look and say, all right, this student tested positive, and these are the three close contacts at lunch. Are those three close contacts positive within the next couple of days, three, four days? Are they even a contact in the future? If they are, are they in the same social group outside of school? Is it possible that it was transferred there? Is it happening in school? Same thing in a classroom. If it's one student in a classroom, we'll be looking for it to bubble up and blow up that way. Is it one staff member that then spreads to an entire grade level, that kind of stuff? And those are the trends, because the nurses, when they do their contact tracing, know the students directly, names that were directly in contact. When we look at the numbers, we can see how many close contact numerically they are, but the nurses have the names, and they're really pulling it together. And then that's where the epidemiologists come in at the state. When they look at data, they're looking for, like I said, the bigger trends, and numbers of, you know, if one of our schools all of a sudden started to bubble up in one area, they would, you know, are the parents bubbling up, and is that leading to the students bubbling up? Or is it the school that's then leading to the parents? So that's, that's what we're doing in terms of our case data and looking at it. It's, it's specific relative to what's happening in the classrooms, the lunchrooms, any, you know, the buses, and any, any area where the kids would potentially interact with each other.
Thank you.
Before, can I say one more thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank, and that's, thank you for bringing it up. The nurses have been on overdrive for the past, can't even count how many months. Many of them worked through the entire break, just catching up on the stuff that was kind of building, leading into break. And hands-down, we owe them a tremendous amount of thanks, because not only is what we just talked about for the past 15 minutes been on their plate, which is an entire day's worth of work for them, they all have, and we were short nurses, one to two nurses, coming into a normal school year, no COVID, just managing the people that are coming to the, to the nurse's office that have an upset stomach, or have the individual health plans in terms of diabetes, or whatever, whatever's on their normal plate. And we were short-staffed there. So throw this on top of it, and it's, the work they're doing is Herculean. So appreciate that, we're really thankful for all the work that they're doing.
There's no question that without them, we can't do enough for them. Anything they need, we call them and say, "What do you want?" And that, and that is the truth, because they have been incredible. And we are, we can only hope that we continue to work collaboratively with them as parents, appropriately and honestly report, because that's very important. And if you're, if you're sick, stay home.
Yes. Okay. Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak?
Rashid Bora, 1 Miko Drive. First of all, I would want to congratulate the three new board members, and also the new board president and vice president. I have two questions. One is, because of the sudden change, some of the students have left their things in the locker, maybe some books, or things like that. So what is the procedure for them to collect that, so that they can participate in the remote education?
Certainly. So that was actually a conversation that I had today with some of the principals, and it's really being examined on a need-by-need basis. Because what's happening is, depending upon the building, if they are in need of something that they can do without for the next few days, and they can still do their academic learning, then we ask them to please do that. If it's imperative, where perhaps it is something, you know, mathematical textbook that is impossible for them to get online, then we are asking the principals to be as accommodating as possible, but also be realistic, because, you know, I always go to the middle school, because I was the middle school principal, 1,760 children. If everybody has to come in to go to a locker, that's not realistic. But perhaps, you know, we get a phone call, it's one or two people, we could accommodate. We have been doing that. I have to give another shout-out, thank you for the nurses, to our technology department. They gave out, what was the number, Dr. Lehman? Something ridiculous, hundreds, over hundreds of technology, at a moment's notice. After we had to make the unfortunate phone call that had to be done, we had already spoken, even before the phone call came, and Mr. Feldman, along with his entire department, was ready and mobilized. I would actually use that word, mobilized, to give out technology. So I think we're looking at not making any type of edict regarding getting your things. If a child needs a book, and then we find that, oh, they can access it online, then the teacher's gonna give them the suggestion of how to access it online. If they cannot move forward with their education and their instruction, then they are going to have to be accommodated. So we're definitely handling it on a case-to-case basis.
Thank you. The second question I had was, there was a lot of, you know, because it was canceled because of the lack of transportation, there were some people who thought that, you know, why can't parents drive their kids to school? So can you please, you know, for the sake of all the people out there, present why that is a challenge, or why that is not an option out there?
So I'm gonna try and explain it twofold. We actually just had this conversation today. So because there currently, and I did respond to each parent individually, because there currently is no hybrid, you're gonna correct me if I say this wrong, hybrid synchronous education, which means children in school, and children at... hybrid synchronous education, which means children in school and children at home at the same time, because the governor has not approved that. A lot of people asked me for that, and that's not possible, because what's happening is, yes, the district can go remote, if we as a district believe it's appropriate, but that's the whole district. So that brings in transportation. Even if we're fortunate to have 75% of our population to drive their children, the 25% that can't drive cannot stay home and go online, because that would then constitute the hybrid synchronous learning that is not currently able to be offered. Additionally, you would say, thinking like a parent, which I am one, well, why can't we just take the routes with the drivers that we have? It doesn't work that way. So for example, if a bus haul, is it 54 or 56 passenger, I always get it wrong, 54?
54.
54 passenger bus, and you say, okay, why can't they do the different routes? What, 44 square miles? It doesn't work that way. It's, the scheduling doesn't work. So although I think it would be a fabulous idea if we could just say, those who can be driven, drive, and then we'd make it work, it is not as doable in the reality of scheduling with buses. It's not, it is not possible. So unfortunately, and I did get a lot of those emails, and I'm glad I'm able to say this now, so people who are watching can hear it, everybody's getting the same answer. So that was the situation, unfortunately. And I mean unfortunately, because I had, we had every intention of opening.
Thank you so much for that answer, and thank you so much to all of you for, for reacting, and to, to be able to do the kind of communication that has come out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hopefully I'm the last one. David Ratner, Two Kings Court. I couldn't let Brian and Rashid get up here without having to come up myself, and both for my congratulations to the new board members, as well as my appreciation for all the incredible work that you longstanding board members have done, as well as our administration. It is Herculean, it's an excellent work. I greatly appreciate everything, and thanks again for hopefully leading us into a bright future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at public forum? Okay, seeing none, we will close public forum. That brings us to number 11 on our agenda, organizational items. Mr. Korski?
Thank you, madam. Number 11 organizational items. It is recommended to the members of the Monroe Township Board of Education to approve the organizational items A through D by consent roll call. So move.
Second. That was not changed.
Okay, before we go to a roll call, the one, the meeting dates. I had asked what day we would be coming back in 2022, seeing as our reorganization meeting is always the first day back from winter break. What we have listed on the draft was Wednesday, January 4th, but we're actually coming back Monday, January 2nd, 2022. So if we could make-
23.
2023, yes. Sorry, that's okay.
My R.
That's all right. So if we can have that change to the meeting dates.
Madam President, you're certainly welcome to suggest that change. It doesn't have to be the first day back. We've had it on other days than the first day back, even on the 6th of the month. The, the rule is, it has to be within seven days of the new year. But if you still wish to make it other than the Wednesday, the only problem I could see is that it could be confusing, that most of the meetings are Wednesday, and the org is something different.
Yeah, I, I think though, and maybe we could take, we could take a vote on it, but I know there was a debate about that for this year as well, and just seeing as we've done that the first day coming back from winter break, I think that we should be consistent, and those that are newly elected take their seat as soon as we come back from winter break.
Madam, you wish to make it Tuesday, January 4th, 2023?
No, Monday, January 2nd, 2023.
Is the school open on January 2nd, seeing as the holiday is Sunday?
That's, we had this conversation-
So the count, the calendar's still in draft form, but right now, we have that as our return date. Again, when we find, it's, the calendar's not finalized, but making it the second, we, if it, if it was the 5th, and we come back on the 4th, or the 3rd, whatever it is, we'd have to change it anyway. So the second is fine for now.
Okay, so let it be noted that the organization meeting for 2023 will be Monday, January 2nd, 2023, instead of Wednesday, January 4th, 2023.
Okay, thank you.
We will now have a roll call on organization items A through D. Motion made by Mr. Chirrell, seconded by Ms. Arminio. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Biermann?
Yes.
Mr. Chirrell?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Rotsky?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Kirby?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Mr. Nikotinsky?
Yes.
Madam President, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is 12, Board President's Report. I just want to say a couple of things. I'm truly humbled to be in this chair, as it represents so much to our community. First and foremost, I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy New Year. I hope everybody that is dealing with COVID recovers quickly and with little symptoms, and I hope that we can get back to normal, you know, sometime during this year. I want to congratulate and welcome our new board members, Gazala, Katie and Kate. Welcome to the table. Paul, congratulations on your reelection to the board. We're happy to have you here with us at the table. And, you know, we are a young board with so much enthusiasm to do great things for our district. Ken and Michelle, you are our seasoned board members. You bring so much knowledge, and you've been so important on our board here and in our district. And it's going to be important to use your knowledge and your expertise to move us forward. Our superintendent, or acting superintendent and assistant superintendent, for the first time in Monroe's history, are truly vested in our community. They both live here in Monroe Township and are community members, and it truly is a great thing to have such community spirit, and, and you're, you're a taxpayer here, and you have a vested interest. And I think that really goes a long way in working toward bringing the very best to our community, because this is where you live, and, and this is where you're raising your children. So I think that we are in a, really, a great position to move our district forward. And I look forward to everything that we're going to accomplish this year. Karen, if you want to say any, anything as vice president?
Thank you. I'm also very humbled to have been chosen and asked to do this, and hopefully I'll be a good support to Chrissy and the rest of the board here, and certainly a role of mentor where needed for any of the new members. And welcome and congratulations for being able to take your seats here. And as always, we're looking for, you know, that progress, and always keeping our children, all of our children, in mind when we make our decisions and our votes, and hoping that we're doing the best we can, even though the best we can is not ever going to please everybody, and we're aware of that. And we do our best to just try and make sure that kids are put first, and that the district, as well as the staff and the taxpayers, are considered as much as we can in that formula. And we do what we can to make it the best environment for the kids to have the best resources and opportunities that they can have.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is 13, Other Board Business. Does anybody have any other board business? Mr. Chirrell?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to also welcome our three new board members, so Ms. Ratner, Ms. Fabiano, and Ms. Bora. So welcome, I look forward to working with you. And I think it's gonna, it's, it was a much-needed change. I'll just leave it at that. As far as Ms. Kirby and Ms. Biermann go, you know, congratulations on your, what do you call it? Employment? I don't even know. Vote, your, being president and vice president. I really, I really look forward to what you, what you will do as our leadership, and I, I really look forward to complaining to you starting tonight, I think. And Ms. Arminio, I want to thank you for doing all that you did. I know that this is a, this is not an easy job. It requires a lot of time and a lot of, a lot of effort, and you have to, you know, you have to deal with a lot of us, which is not always easy. But I do appreciate everything you've, you've done. I think you handled yourself very well. I think that, you know, you handle, you also worked with the public, and you were very open and transparent, and so I, I do appreciate that. So I just wanted to, to thank you all for that. And I just want to say one thing, you know, it's, it's really disheartening to have people sending me, I don't, I don't go on social media a lot, but it's disheartening just to see the prior board members, people who are still board members as of yesterday, bashing our, our, bashing Ms. Chanley, and calling her a liar, and, and talking about how awful she is, and how she's going to destroy the district, and get ready for all of that. These are people that are very, very, very small. They're small, nasty, angry people, and I'm glad they're no longer here. And, and it's ugly for me to even have to say it, but seeing that kind of stuff is absolutely disgusting. So I hope they go back into their little hole and fester with their anger, and their, and all their bad vibes, and, and just enjoy their miserable lives. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Michelle?
Just a reminder that, would you be giving out the committee requests?
Yes, we'll have that, yeah.
Madam President, I-
Before the end of the meeting or next-
Prepare these however you wish to handle it. The most noteworthy thing is when they should be returned by.
Okay, yes, we have copies up here. Everyone can take a copy and fill it out, and then it gets returned by January 7th, the latest. And these come to, do they come back to?
Traditionally, they come to me, and then I compile the results and furnish them to you.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else?
Madam President, I, first of all, want to thank everybody for their warm welcomes. I'm, definitely feel like I'm a little bit of a new kid here, and it's honestly been overwhelming how warm and friendly everybody has been during this process. So thank you. I look forward to working with all of you. I had a couple of, I guess, questions, and being relative, very new to the board, I wasn't sure if this would be an appropriate time to ask. I figure if I ask one, just about something regarding the week, upcoming week with schools, and if it's something that needs to be discussed in a different moment, that's totally fine. But I guess my, my biggest question is, with us switching over to remote learning, is there a reason that classes are still only half of the day, rather than the full length of the school day?
So I think the, the, the plan of action that was put into place was that we thought it would only be for the five days, and that is why we went to the half-day. We thought it would give an opportunity for the students to get comfortable again with online learning, and I'm hoping they don't get too comfortable, because I'm hoping it doesn't last that long. And at the same time, also give the teachers the opportunity to work collaboratively, to do extra planning, and for even those children that were getting caught up on their virtual home instruction, we thought it was a great opportunity. So when the last minute, I should say, the very last minute change happens, we just decided that we would keep the plan of action that was in place, and that we would just get through for the four days of the online learning, and with the hope that we would be returning on Monday to full-time, in-person instruction. So that's really the only reason why we remain that way. If, go off to bed, we have to remain, there will be a very different, it'll be a very different structure, and it is based upon building to building because of A-B schedule, how they do it, but it would be a full day of instruction online, if that was the case.
Okay. I guess along with those lines, I know where we initially were going half-day was to avoid lunches, because there's a lot of contact there. Are there any other situations where students are without masks for a lengthy period of time in the school day indoors?
No.
Okay.
No, and actually, we had a very nice conversation with, it's kind of a segue to that. So we had, we actually had quite a few meetings today, and one of them was speaking to the principals about next week, and saying, what can we do even better? Even if it's a very short time, even if it affects instruction, which it might for five or 10 minutes, depending upon the middle school and so forth. So we spoke with each principal individually, and we, to talk about what it looks like to even provide further distancing, let's say, in the middle school. What does that look like? I'm happy to say that they'll be making changes, an email will be coming forth. We're going to be utilizing the gym. It's not something we could do permanently, but it's something that we feel for a week or two we can do. Additional tables, we now have 40 tables going to the middle school. The high school is going to have even, you know, more teachers with the concern about, you know, wearing, making sure those masks are up the minute they finish eating, possibly opening some windows, getting some cool, fresh air in, helps with ventilation. And the elementaries are going to look even further to what it looks like. They do a very nice job, because they are much smaller schools with the numbers. So we're being very mindful and very thoughtful in our decisions, especially in lunch, if we, when we return to full-time instruction for next week.
And then there's my last thing that I had thought of, and this is something that probably has to be coordinated with CDC or DOH, but, you know, unfortunately, especially, you know, for myself and others who may have had like an adverse reaction to some of the vaccines, the medical community is stating that a lot of the people who only had those initial two vaccine shots are no long, are basically the same as those who were unvaccinated. Is, is that, I mean, is that something that's even being considered anywhere?
So that is exactly what the CDC guidance for the general public updated, and that's exactly what they're updating for us, that they haven't released yet. So what the CDC guidance for the general public is, it looks at and redefines what vaccination is. So if you're outside the six-month window of your double shot, it's a different term, I think it's like two months from your J&amp;J or something like that. Even though you're vaccinated, they would treat you like a close contact of a non-vaccinated person. So they're going to tweak that? Well, I shouldn't say that. We haven't seen anything. I would assume if they're going to do some variation of that guidance for schools, it would probably play into that. I did hear today that they approved one of the two, as the FDA, I think, approved, the 12 to 15-year-old booster shot. Right now, that's really, if we look at, anybody that's 16 and over can get a booster. Anyone that's 5 to 11 is within the six-minute, the six-month window of getting their shots. We have a three-year age gap right now, where if you were on the early side of getting your, your shots, and you're, I think it's, I think it's 12, 13, or 14 right now, you may be outside the window. So having this next step for a booster, if, if the family's choosing to go down the road of getting vaccinations and stuff, would be, eliminate that variable that could potentially come up with some new guidance. But again, I haven't seen any guidance, they're talking about it at a state level and a federal level, but I would assume, based on the general public guidance, that there's probably going to be some similarities to us, and it's usually a little stricter for us.
Okay, and then just, you know, thank you to both of you, and to Mr. Korski. I know, I was a teacher for over a decade. School administration is an English job to begin with, and the last two years-
Can you get closer to the mic?
Oh, sure, sorry. So I was just saying, I taught for over a decade, and I know that principal, school principal and superintendent is an English job sometimes to begin with, and the last two years, I've seen it from many colleagues, or former colleagues, I should say. It's 10 times even harder and more challenging, so I really appreciate all the work that everyone is putting into this.
Right, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Fabiano?
So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank everybody. I want to thank my family and the voters of Monroe. I'm truly honored and grateful that I was one of the three people that you overwhelmingly chose to represent your voice here at this table. This is truly a full-circle moment for me, once I was sitting where my own children are in the back of the room, not on technology, but back there, in the audience at a Board of Education meeting in here in Monroe, waiting to speak to the board on behalf of our teachers who were working without a contract at the time. And I never would have thought that over 20 years later, and as an educator myself, that I would be sitting here at this table, speaking to the community and listening to your concerns, and working for the greater good of our children. Monroe is a great community. It's the reason I grew up here, and the reason that I chose to raise my own family here. I'm hopeful that we, as a community, can stop the divisiveness and misinformation, and seek truth and understanding. I'm hopeful that we will, you will continue to ask questions and pursue productive discussion. And lastly, I'm hopeful that we can all listen, listen to the experts, listen to the concerns, and listen to each other. At the end of the day, we are all human beings who only want what is best for our children and our community, and I'm looking forward to listening and working with all of you, and finally uniting this great town around education. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Bora?
I want to start by wishing everybody a happy and healthy New Year. It's hard to second that, but I would like to thank the residents of Monroe who have trusted me with this responsibility. I sit here today after having been on the other side of that microphone for the last decade. I assure you that I will do my best on this side of the microphone to listen to the community's concerns and suggestions, and factor it into the work I do as a board member. To my fellow Board of Ed members, I'm honored to be on the board with you. Many of you I have watched and observed for years, and have been inspired from, and have learned a lot from, and I- learned a lot from and I hope to do you proud while I sit here. I understand that I'm only one voice and only one vote. To achieve what we all hope to do in this year and future years, we will need to work together as one board. While I truly hope each of us will think, question and vote independently, I'm confident that overall student success will be the goal that'll unite us as a board. Thank you once again and good luck to us all.
Ms. Arminio?
Just a scheduling correction on the agenda. Before everybody leaves, number 16, I don't know if it's been changed on the public agenda to the 26th, but my, okay, so I have the old agenda, is that what happened?
Oh, yes, it's, it's, yes, January 26th.
And also on the draft has been changed. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rutske?
Yes. A quick question of administration. So with regards to different schools, different perspectives and the busing, is there thought to, if this persists, to maybe keeping the elementary schools open but middle school and high school closed, remote? So can you, is there a way to do a split where the older kids who are more easily educated at home can stay home, but the younger kids who need to be in school can get to school? Has that been considered at all?
We have not, we are having a meeting tomorrow with Transportation, Mr. Gorsky, myself and Dr. Lehman, to have a conversation about moving forward for Monday as well as if a Plan B could come up with so that we do not have this last-minute situation that happened this time. And I think the question would have to be asked directly of the Director of Transportation because I think the concept of, they'd absolutely have to reschedule, and I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but they'd have to reschedule all the buses because now it's not elementary, middle school, high school, it's location. So as I said earlier, 54 passenger and they still stop. There may not be anybody there to pick up, but they still stop.
Right.
It doesn't mean, the answer is no by any means. It means we'd have to look and see, is this doable? Is this possible? It's, it's like rearranging a schedule in a school. It's the same exact concept.
Sure, sure.
So I do think it's a conversation that we're definitely going to have tomorrow. We do have a scheduled, scheduled meeting because I think it is important to think out of the box because even if everything goes wonderful and we're all back and healthy next week, it could happen again. And what does that mean? How do we plan? How do we look outside of the, I'm a, I'm a big outside-of-the-box thinker because you have to make things work. It's a middle school thing. So it's, it's just the way it is. So I do think that's a legitimate question and I would have to have that conversation with the supervisor because that's her area of expertise.
For sure, for sure. Thank you.
Please.
So just to build on that, that is a strategy in our pre-planning for weeks. We've been talking about what if this gets bad, what if it gets worse. One of the things we talked about was pre-staging technology, which assisted us in getting the, the devices out in, you know, 18 hours. They were ready to, if we had kids, if we had the students in today, we could have slid them in backpacks and sent the kids home. And so we were-
Ready.
We were in a position where we had to give the go and then they were ready to roll. And so that's one of the pre-planning. But the transportation question, that's a strategy, not necessarily transport-wise, but to manage an outbreak, whether it's a classroom, a school, a grade level. We have the tools and the ability to be able to say, something's happening in some building, we're going to take that building and we're going to put them on remote until we can get an understanding of what's going on. Or there's something happening in a classroom or a wing of a building or something like that. So we have that as a strategy and it kind of builds on transportation about isolating a certain area, but keeping the rest of the district going. And that was, that's our intention from the beginning, is to really figure out where their potential hotspots are and then be able to react instead of having to do the whole, the transportation is our thread-
Sure.
-in all the buildings and that's, you know, the breaking point was reached last night. So, thank you.
Just following up on the, the transportation, I noticed today our buses were out on the roads. What were they doing?
So transportation staff that was not ill came in and just as we did last year, Mr. Gorsky, you could build on this, they ran their runs. That's something that we had them do last year. There are other things, tasks that they can do when they come in. Otherwise, we're, we're open as a district, but they don't have anything to do. So we're required to log certain miles on buses and even Mr. Gorsky has more details and stuff, but we, we engage them and we keep them active because they are on our roster and things.
Madam President?
Yes.
Most noteworthy is the word "active" that Dr. Lehman used. The buses have been sitting for the whole winter break and with the diesel buses in particular, it's important to keep them fresh and charged and batteries running. So today was basically a dry run of the routes and it improves the performance of the fleet.
And how many buses were not allowed to run because we didn't have enough bus drivers?
They don't have that level of specificity, but I can tell you one other piece of this was we had the, the hire professionals on the buses as well. And so it helps the whole process.
Okay.
Did you want me to share any of the numbers? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Chan? Go ahead. Is that what you were, no, go ahead.
So I just wanted to add to the discussion about Plan B. If things, God forbid, are not, the best place for the students is to be in school. I, as a parent, also feel that, but given the situation we are in, we're seeing a lot of polarity in the community. There are, there's a group that's strongly in support of all remote, there's a group that's strongly in support of sending their kids to school. And there have been questions about why can't we go back to the hybrid mode that we did last year? And I know from conversation with teachers that hybrid is, is not the best approach for teachers because it's like telling them to mine two classrooms across the hallway. So I had a suggestion, since you guys are going to be putting some thought into this, and this is also coming from community input, can we divide the teachers into, into two groups? And I know it's not going to be a magic one, it's going to be not so easy to do, but teachers that handle in-person students and teachers that handle only remote students, after taking a community survey for a whole marking period, that these kids will not be in school and these kids will be in school. Is that a possibility to consider? Thank you.
The word "no" is not something I'm comfortable with, but I'm going to say no and I'm going to explain why. So as of right now, the hybrid synchronous learning option is not approved by the governor. People are sending me emails, which I appreciate, and they're sending me links. The way it works is if the district needs to go remote, like we did, we have the ability as a local educational association. But to accommodate, and you're absolutely right, let's say, we have almost, we have 7,000 children, let's say 3,500 people, children's parents, want them to go, the answer is no. However, if there was a change where the governor did provide an opportunity, we did look at that when I was the middle school principal. Part of the problem is, not so much in the elementary, but in the middle school and high school, is certification. It, it does not work as cleanly as we thought because we did create, we did create the remote teams. And due to the numbers, it did not work. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't look. We're always looking for other Plan Bs, C, D, because we need to and it's our responsibility. But as of right now, and I'm so glad I'm being videoed and this could be shared, there is no hybrid remote synchronous option like people think. So if the building wa, if the district was to close, or we talked about this, which was an answer to Mr. Rutske's question, we keep on talking about this, if everybody is, if our numbers and our conversations and everything dictates that we go back full-time and there was a situation in an individual building or a classroom, we are not going to close down the whole district. We're going to look at each individual area.
Thank you. I, you know, I want to make it clear that I do not doubt the amount of, you know-
No, I'm glad you asked.
Thinking and work that you guys are putting into this. Nobody wants to be in your shoes, so thank you so much for thinking for the students. It's sometimes so much better to just ask that and hear it straight from you guys than to just assume why it's not happening. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
So just to follow up on that, because, you know, in our community, we have a wide range, right? We have people who think that we should be without masks in school full-time and people who think that it's very high risk right now, we should be completely remote and everything in between. I guess my question is, for students who have family members perhaps, or, you know, parents who feel like they have family members who are high-risk and while Omicron seems to be very mild, obviously there's exceptions, you know, there are several people who have gotten, you know, more ill, if you will. Is there an option for those students right now? I don't believe so, but I just kind of wanted to put it out there to ensure that I was accurate in that.
Right. And that basically answers Gazala's question the same. There is, that option is not currently available on an individualized basis.
Okay. Mr. Rutske?
You know what I forgot to start my conversation with? It's an honor to be up here at the Monroe Board again for my seventh year. Earlier tonight, the Jamesburg Board nominated me to represent the Jamesburg Board and the Jamesburg students here in the Monroe School District. So it's an honor to be here for my seventh year, look forward to working with everybody and thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Our next agenda item is our closed session. Before we go into closed session, we have to appoint a temporary secretary. I think that is normally the Vice President.
I want to appoint Ms. Bierman to be the acting secretary.
I'd like to appoint Ms. Bierman.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Be opposed?
Any opposed?
No.
No? Okay. So our next item is our closed session. Our closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects, review of resumes of superintendent of schools position. Following closed session, action may be taken. Discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Hopefully, we are not in closed session for more than an hour. Okay, thank you. We'll call our meeting back to order. We have no actions to be taken following closed session.